It's been 4:00 PM, January 7th, here in City Council Chambers. I'll call the meeting to order. And ask Assistant to call the law.
Sure. Councilor Carty, Councilor LeBard, Councilor Bidwell, and Councilor Nash.
Here.
Thank you. And seeing no public comment, I'll move on to ask if there is a motion regarding the minutes.
Moved and seconded to approve minutes of December 3rd.
Any additions, corrections? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. And we'll move right on to, first of all, I want to thank Police Chief Joe Pasberg for coming. And turn it over to you, you've received some of the questions that the council has had.
Yes. I received a request just for a general update on public safety issues, some information about NEDA, and then also the department's experience with some of our seasonal activities. So that's what I prepared for you. So as far as a general update on public safety, I think the thing that's most notable that you're probably the most interested in is regarding staffing and the continual challenges that we face around staffing. So the unemployment rate is at a 30-year low, which is great, but we're in the midst of a policing shortage across the country. This is not unique to Northampton, not unique to Mass., not unique to anywhere. It's happening all over the place. And why is it happening? Variety of reasons. There's a lot more jobs out there. There's jobs in the private sector that pay more than public sector jobs. The job doesn't have a lot of flexibility. So some people may not want to work overnight or work long hours, whatever it may be. Obviously, there's a danger component as well. And there is also, there's been a lot of changes in the way that police are perceived over the last three years. So there's a lot that plays into it, but we have a lot less people applying for jobs. And some of you have sat in on some of our hiring days when we're looking at new candidates. And Councilor Bidwell was in one. And the candidates are different than they used to be. They don't come to us with experience. They don't come to us often with even a degree in the field. They come to us pretty new. So that is very challenging. It's challenging for us to be able to identify candidates in the interview sessions that are going to be a good fit because they don't, they haven't worked in policing yet. And sometimes someone, they think they're going to like it, and then they put on the uniform and start working, and it's different than what they thought it was. So we're worried about, you know, losing people. We invest all this money into training them. We go to the academy, and then they come out and may not be a good fit for it. So that is a challenge that we see on the hiring end. And again, not unique here, but certainly we are experiencing that without a doubt. The other thing that's kind of unique is, you know, we do this in policing. You have to get hired first, and then we send you a way to go to training, which is different than many other careers. So we hire you, then we wait for an academy to come along. Then you're gone for the five-to-six-month academy. Then you come out, and you're trained for four months in field training. Then you start working. So as an example, we had a couple officers leave our department in October and November of 2018. The next academy here isn't until June. So all the way from, so that vacancy began, say, November 1st, 2018. Academy goes all, the academy starts in June. It won't finish till December. Four months of training. They won't be on the street. That vacancy won't be filled until April or May of 2020. So that is one of the challenges we have, is we're also waiting for the academies to start before we can hire people. So those are our challenges.
It's a big challenge.
It is, actually. It's a big challenge.
Is that like 18 months? Is that pretty much what you?
Yeah, it depends on when the next academy is. If someone resigns two months before the academy starts. Right. And that was the worst-case scenario. The last academy started in October. So if someone resigned that month, and then the month back, two resignations, October and November. So that's like worst-case scenario, because an academy just started. Now we have to wait for that whole academy. So that is unfortunate. The other thing that's kind of unique is a lot of times, if you, our department is staffed for 65. That's how many positions we have full-time on our department. 50 of those are what you see on the street more. They're your uniformed officers. So this isn't supervisors or anyone else. These are your police officers. Five of them are assigned to the detective bureau. So they're plainclothes, so minus five. One is in the schools. That's Officer Wallace. And one is currently serving in an IT function, although we're making a change there. So that's seven. So out of the 50, we actually have 43 that are police officers in uniform who are supposed to be working the street. I made a graph. Who doesn't love a bar graph? I made a couple copies so you can pass around. It's interesting.
We can share one.
I have my own copy here. Sorry to mess up.
I'll pass one to them, and you're in the right.
So I made you that so that you can understand what...
Oh, there's not actually, yeah.
What was that? Yeah, I think I got four. I think I got four. Thank you. So if you look at it, just, I can explain what you're looking at. You know, when someone grieves, they're new, right? That's the academy. So on the bottom there, when you look at all the greens, you may see greens that have a three or a four. That means we have three people in the academy, or four people in the academy. The yellow is when they're in the field training program. Red is they're injured, they're medical out injured. And black is a vacancy. So even though we may have 50 positions to work the street, you can see in September was our worst month. We actually had 12 of those positions, either three of them were vacant, or you can see the other nine were not working. So that's another challenge we face, is that even though we have staffing, or we have the vacancies or the positions for...
Where's the FTEP at?
That's the training part. That's the four months of training after the academy. So this is the challenge that we face. And September was very bad. Having, you know, 50 minus 12, you're looking at 38 people. Very challenging to cover the city. This year, this last 2018 calendar year, we had 800 hours of forced holdovers. Some people signed overtime on their own. In our department, we had to force someone over however many times that was. It was 800 hours of forced time. That has an impact on burnout and morale, and also safety. If someone comes into work expecting to work 3 to 11:00, and then go home and go to bed, they unexpectedly have to work 11:00 to 7:00 in the morning. That is not great. We prefer to avoid that, but it's tricky. So this is one of the challenges we're facing. And we're looking at this, trying to figure out, you know, what we can do to better manage our staff. But it's been the way it's been for a long time.
Chief?
Yep.
The month of December?
Yep.
And then looking at November, the red? And then October?
Yep.
September significant.
September significant. Yeah, that was, we lost a lot, yep.
And was, when you say medical?
Yep.
Is that on duty that it occurred, like hurt themselves, or whatever?
It's mixed. Some have been hurt on duty, and they're out after surgeries or whatever else. And some are off-duty injuries with surgeries. We had a lot of injuries on and off-duty this year, which is a lot of red. So these are people at home who are filling one of these positions. So you can see the challenge, but this is why we're...
Is the number correspond to the number of positions?
Yes. So the number in it, right. So like in September, you can see in the black, the three. That means we had three vacancies.
I understand.
Yeah, okay. So then you can see in October, there's no more black, because I told you the academy's starting in October, right? So we were able to fill those positions. But then you can see also that then someone resigned. So then we lost someone, I remember.
Yeah, okay.
And you can also see in December, the green number drops to four, and that's because someone got knocked out of the academy. So, right, so, right.
Oh, I see.
Someone, if they're injured in the academy, or they don't meet standards, right. And in this case, it was the injury.
So when we had five, now we have to...
We had five. And then we dropped one, yep.
They're kind of in the limbo waiting position. In the academy, or are they, are they employed while they're in the academy?
They're employed as a student officer, yep.
Yep.
They're not in the union yet, but they're being, making that student officer rate. So the problem is that takes up the space. So if someone fills out of the academy, same thing I just said to you, like, you know, if someone resigns that month, it's very hard. We won't be able to fill that until there's an academy. And, you know, people are coming to us, I mean, just, people are coming to us not as physically fit as they used to be. I think 10, 20 years ago, all those of us applying for jobs, even if we weren't fit when we knew we wanted to be a cop, as soon as we realized we did, we were out there running, doing push-ups and all that. We're seeing different abilities of people who are coming in and applying. And that's just not my judgment, looking at people. But when they take the pre-exam to get in the academy, they're not doing well.
Are there requirements to last year?
So, yeah, so it's interesting. They had, so what happens, it used to be, they just changed it. It used to be so that you could go into the academy, and like your fitness level was whatever it was. There wasn't a running type of test to get in. But then when people were going in, you have to run every day, and lift things and all that. And people weren't able to meet those standards. So they were losing them on physical fitness in the academy. So every chief is having the same experience. We're like, ooh, people don't seem to be as fit as they used to be. So now the MPTC, the government body that organizes the, and sets the standards for training, they now have a requirement when you, before the academy, you have to run and do push-ups and all that. But we're nervous, you know, that, we want to make sure people are going to be prepared for that now. So we'll see how that goes. But, because we certainly don't want to lose people in the academy for physical fitness. There's a lot of ways to lose people. We certainly don't want it to be for that.
I recall when, I think Councilor Carty recalled this also. Chief Sinkowitz, every time during our budget hearings, we heard the same thing about losing police officers. And they were getting better jobs. And he would come out and use an example, state police, better benefits, higher pay, or other areas of more money. So we're hearing the same thing again.
Yeah, we just had an officer resign last week for Mass. State Police.
There you go.
And he said, I'm happy, I like things, but it takes more...
That's hard to compete with that wage level and everything else. But the point's about physical fitness, I'm still, I know, yes.
So we're hoping that people will be better prepared when they're, when they know they have to pass this test in the academy. We'll see.
Chief, when we, when you lose someone, not because they go to a higher-paying position, state police or elsewhere, what are the, what are the other reasons that you learn from exit interviews?
Right. So, I didn't make this for you, but this is my, this is what we do, employee separation. This tracks why we've lost employees since 2003. And essentially, you know, looking at, we're always trying to find patterns, because obviously, we don't want to lose people. So what is it that we're doing? And even though I won't pass it around, anything, all the blue you see on there, that light blue, those are all people leaving for other police agencies.
For other what?
Other police agencies. So for me, that's my biggest concern. Ideally, we want everything to be purple, which is retirement, right? But it's just, that's not what we see. So we lose a few...
Is that broken down to state police versus local municipalities?
It is, yes, because I love bar graphs. So, yeah. Yeah, we, in 2017, we lost three to the state police. We only lost three employees in 2017, and all three went to the state police. In 2018, we've lost four, five, six, seven, eight. We lost eight just in 2018. Four of them were to other departments. The departments were Greenfield, Belcher Town, Wilbraham, and Iwo.
Do they make more money?
Yep. Yep.
And the, the remaining to the state police?
Well, the state police, he just resigned last week, so that was 2019 technically.
Oh, I see. They make good money.
The state police?
Yes.
Yep.
My girlfriend's husband is in it.
It's a totally different job. It is. The thing about state police is, you know, it's actually, a lot of people, they just, they want to be troopers. There's other, there's a lot of things you can do as a trooper that you won't be able to do as a municipal cop in many cases. And, you know, they just, they grew up wanting to be a trooper. It's a little bit of a different thing. But it is frustrating to lose people to other municipalities. That's what I, is my struggle. You know, we invest a lot of money as a city, a lot of time, and it's hard to see people, we get them off and...
Does it have to do with the residency, do you think, or...
It's mixed.
Like, for example, losing Northampton residents to go work in another police department?
I don't think that's ever, not recently, that hasn't happened. Most, a lot of our officers don't live here. They live in Belcher Town, Rustfield, and Chickaby.
So they go home as much as they can.
Yeah, we had one that went home. He lived in Belcher Town, and he won, he became an officer of Belcher Town. Yeah. And Belcher Town, their top step is 62,000, and our top step is 55,500. 62,000. 61,970.
That's at the top of whatever...
That's the top step. And our top step is 55,559.
That's after being here for however many years it would take to attain that level of...
Yeah. Yeah, so that's our step eight.
But the starting, the starting step is still probably low 40s, or...
It's, the starting step in Belcher Town is 41,107.
And what do we, 30?
No, we're 44, 288. But once you're on here for, like, the one we lost had been with us for four and a half years. So he's coming in there at a higher rate than he was making here, so. Yeah, it's, I look at this too, because obviously, we all want to prevent this from occurring. It's not, you know...
But if someone has the option of a hot, slightly higher pay rate, and you'll lay a few miles from home... Are they able to take their time and transfer it?
Uh huh. Oh, yeah. And because there's a policing shortage, of course, other departments are thirsty for officers that already have the academy, like, you know, especially awesome ones. And the reality is, Northampton cops are awesome. People take them because they're highly trained.
They don't have to pay to train them.
They don't have to pay to train them, and, yeah, yeah, yeah. We have, we have great staff, so they like our staff, so. Yeah, so actually, every other surrounding community pays more than us. Belcher Town, Wilbraham, they are at 59,65. Amherst is at 61,054. These are their top steps. So Greenfield's at 60,991.
Hiring people who are Northampton residents who are committed to Northampton is probably, I don't know how much that can be factored into the application process.
We absolutely weigh that in heavily. So when we're looking at people, we, you know, you've been in there, we absolutely weigh that in. And it's, there's not a lot of Northampton residents that apply. There's like, almost none. I think we had maybe two out of the last group of interviews.
Well, we now have a criminal justice program at Smithland.
Yeah, and we're linked into them in the sense that one of our lieutenants, Bob Powers, is a liaison with them. So, you know, that is going on. But interestingly, I spoke with one of the instructors up there, and she's saying, a lot of them don't want to actually be police officers. They want to be parole, probation, military. So even though it's a criminal justice program, it's not, it's not all police officers that are here. So I know, we're very interested in that program, because we'd like them to, want to work here. And I...
Be a good feeder.
I really think it would be great, you know, for hiring a lot of Northampton residents, of course, but just don't have them applying.
What does the mayor say about the difference of these towns that you're talking about, of them paying more than what we're getting here?
I don't know. I guess you'd have to ask the mayor.
I will.
I mean, you know, it's, I think it's...
Still in the ballpark.
Yes, it's in the ballpark.
Yeah, but we're not like extremely lower than... Yeah, but they're, but, right.
Yeah. The tough thing is if you're, if you're 25, and you're looking at a 30-year career ahead of you, the difference in $9,000 a year, over 30 years, and when you're talking about retirement, is a lot.
Right. $9,000 is significant.
So what has been done in recent years to address the, the need to make adjustments?
Right. So we've changed our hiring practices in that we've gotten rid of the written test. We used to have the written test, which I think was limiting for, for some people. For instance, our test was only given every two years, so...
You're talking about civil service?
No, we got rid of that in 2005. So we got rid of civil service, and that was great. That was, thank God, that's gone. For me, anyway, it's much easier to hire. But former Chief Sinkowitz had put into place a written exam, and that was great. Most departments were doing that. But what happens is if I give a test today, the scores are good for two years. And in a week, someone fantastic walks in the door. They're a resident, they want to work here. I can't help it, because they didn't take our test. So it was limiting. And then also, you know, we were, you know, had scores working kind of top to bottom. That doesn't always play out best when you're looking for different sorts of candidates. Like, if you wanted to hire someone from Northampton, because you think they're more likely to stay, but that person scored less than someone else, you know, is that really, you really want to hire the higher score because they have a higher score? We just wanted to be able to judge people for their, you know, the factors that we value. And since we have an associate's degree as a minimum hiring standard, which most departments do not have that, we felt like having that degree was enough to show that, like, they were knowledgeable. And, you know, if the written test was going to try to wash out people that maybe wouldn't have the skill level to be able to do it, we felt like, we have the associate's degree. If you went to college, you've got a degree, you have a reasonable GPA, you must be all right. So that's kind of where we start, and then we look at the other things that we're looking for. And we're looking for really different officers in our community. As you all know, we, we people who have really different backgrounds and are more, you know, the guardian mindset.
You said you're not really getting the critical mass of applicants to be able to...
Absolutely not. No. So that is a challenge. But again, nationally, you know, this is something that is going on here, and also going on all over the place, just because people don't want to go into the field as much. So that's my update on that kind of, I think it's interesting, and again, bar graphs. So opioids, you had asked a bit about that, and so I can give you the data that I have. You know, we have the DARF program. Northampton is where the DARF program began. It's grown from just three officers to now seven. Those officers don't just go out and do follow-up on their own. They partner with recovery coaches. And recovery coaches are people who have usually faced addiction themselves and are now in recovery. And they care up with the officer, and go out and talk to people, and try to provide services. So that's been a really good partnership, working, of course, with Hampshire Hope. And last year in Northampton, I got this information from Hampshire Hope this morning. In 2017, Northampton had four suspected overdoses related to opioids. Unfortunately, in 2018, up until the end of November, we had 10. So that number has gone up quite a bit. We're the highest in Franklin and Hampshire counties. The nearest to us are Belcher Town and East Hampton, with six suspected opioid deaths apiece in that same time period. So definitely still struggling. You know, it's, I think we've done a lot of incredible work. I think the stigma around addiction, if we could measure that, we, I think we'd see dramatic changes in that area in the way that police think about addiction, in the way that members of our community think about addiction. We're really having some really positive impact on that. And that's probably one of the first steps of working on this really complex issue. So while the number of overdose deaths is, you know, still difficult, and obviously, we should have been a lot lower, we're still doing a lot of great work in that area. Getting more Narcan out there in the hands of bystanders, so, and that's, Hampshire Hope is doing that. It's not our department, but that's getting out there. Our officers are all carrying multiple doses. They carry a dose for themselves in case they're exposed. So doing a lot of work there. And it's just, I think it's very difficult, so.
We had Mayor Bolero here at our last meeting, and I asked her, what was the difference between heroin and opioid that's going on? And never knew. She said that heroin was so expensive versus the opioid. The other way around?
Yeah. Yeah. And heroin has...
I think if you get, the heroin is much cheaper to get it on the street. If you get it on the street. Right. Well, that's the only way to get the heroin.
Right. But the other, the thing that has changed about heroin is that it used to be heroin, and now it's mostly fentanyl. So when you look at those numbers of deaths, you know, you go to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and you look at their overdose deaths, I believe it's 75 or 80% of it is cut with fentanyl. So it's fentanyl that's actually causing a lot of these fatal overdoses. And, you know, there's been in the news lately, information on the fentanyl test strips to try to tell whether or not, it's fairly controversial, but like, it's just an uphill battle. You know, you feel like you get a hold of one thing, and then something new enters into it, so.
There's a class, Thursday. And we're attending that.
What's that class?
Physical Thursday.
Narcan training, the healing room, or...
Right.
For a new bunch of time. Yeah, it's, everyone should know how to administer it, and it just, it can happen anywhere. And our overdoses are occurring in public places, in public bathrooms, but, you know, sometimes, so. Yeah. It's a difficult struggle for all involved.
Chief, do we, do we track how often Narcan is administered?
We do.
So, I mean, we, so, you know, what's an estimate in the last year of how many times?
It's on our open data portal, but a rough estimate would be about 30 to 35. But it's on the open data portal if you want to verify that.
You mean police administration?
Well, there's, I want to say there's like 30.
Because you also get the first responders. I mean, the, you know, the fire ambulance.
Yeah, it's mixed. Sometimes, too, we arrive on scene, a bystander has administered one dose, and then we administer a dose. So, and we do track that. It's all tracked. I just don't have the data in front of me.
Well, just in terms of the NPD being part of that program along with our emergency services, that, you know, that, yes, the overdose deaths are up, but these, you know, roughly 40 people that could have also overdosed as well.
Oh, yeah. And I suspect, it is kind of an interesting thing. We used to be able to track overdoses better because we got called on most of them. But now that bystander Narcan is out there, it's more likely that people are being revived in their own homes and not calling for services. So it's really hard to get a good number on number of overdoses in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Interesting.
Yeah. It is interesting. So, anything, other questions on that? Sorry it's not better. Maybe I'll come back with lower numbers next year, but it's difficult. I, so for hate crimes, just to mention it, it's been something that, it's discussed in our community, you know, when things occur, usually, it's more on everyone's, on everyone's minds. But I'm on the governor's hate crimes task force. It's been really good work over the last year or so, maybe. We meet out in Boston every couple of months or so. There were a couple of recommendations. The task force is divided into kind of education and law enforcement. So I sit on the law enforcement subcommittee, and some of the recommendations out of there, I think, have been really good. And so the governor sent out a letter maybe two months ago or so, asking, or recommending for police chiefs to do a certain, certain things. One is to adopt the IACP's model policy, which ours was pretty close on that anyway, but we, and we had done it before the recommendation came out from the governor. But we do have that model policy, which is great. It means that the policy that we have on investigating hate crimes and bodies-based incidents is the model recommended by the national organization. IACP is the International Association of Chiefs of Police. It's kind of our principal guiding organization. So a lot of model policies come from the IACP. So we adopted that policy and distributed it to our staff. So we have that in place. And they also recommended that we have a civil rights officer, so one of our officers serving in this very particular role. And the role of that officer will be to kind of be the expert in the field, also liaise, serve as a liaison with certain community members. And also, the state is working to create a database where we can enter in hate crimes so that they can be better tracked in communities. And it would be the job of the civil rights officer to do that. Of course, we're already part of the open data that we, that we already have, the White House Police Data Initiative. So we already have our hate crimes posted on there, so we're kind of ahead of the curve there. But the state, there's not a centralized database for across the state. So they really want to fill in those missing numbers, try to get a better idea of what we're dealing with in our community.
So they would have to go through training on civil rights, though.
Yes, so...
That's intense.
Yeah. The MPTC is tasked with putting together a training for civil rights officers. So ideally, every community, all 351, would have a civil rights officer. And then they'll go to those trainings.
That's great.
They'll be able to get a better picture as a Commonwealth, really. You know, because we all wonder that, right? We can talk about it, but should you really see it recorded? We don't really know.
So we do have data locally. What, any particular trends that you're seeing?
Most of ours, and again, if you go on our website, you can see them. We range between, you know, one and maybe four or five in a year. Most of them are vandalism. So on our open data portal, you can actually see exactly what happened. So if what happened was swastikas were spray-painted on the wall, that's what it says happened. So you can get a really clear picture. And I want to say, we had one year where we had five, and that was the highest that, you know, we had documented. And I think two or three of them were vandalisms. But again, I refer you to the open data portal, just to be sure on that, those numbers. And certainly, we've had some incidents where there's been, you know, people actually, you know, assaulting each other or something. But not very many. I think our community is attentive to really indicators, you know, whether it be in our school systems or in other communities where they see concerning things, they report those things. Any questions about hate crime? NEDA, your committee had asked specifically about NEDA. I've had a lot of contact with NEDA through all these months beforehand, after implementation of adult-use marijuana sales. Biggest issue, as I'm sure you all know, is parking. Parking is the biggest, we get the most complaints... Parking is the biggest, we get the most complaints from Wright Avenue because it's a public street. There's still a lot of problems in the private lots there and they're dealing with those by private tows. Pro-lube, the doctor's office, you know, that's ninety Con Street, a few of the other buildings down there have definitely had to privately tow vehicles. We're not involved in private tows, so I can't, I don't have those numbers for you. But Wright Avenue was a struggle. I plan to meet with the director of the DPW down there and do a, the street was changed after it was paved, it was paved and it became narrower. So I believe it lost about seven or eight feet due to a tree belt that was put in, which then makes it so it's kind of challenging to have cars on both sides of the road down there. So we're trying to look at that to see what the best option is for the community there on Wright Avenue. So that's, and we've had parking on Pleasant Street on the right side there, as you're traveling northbound, there's been some blocking of a PVTA bus station there, a bus stop. But overall, cars are okay there. The biggest issue with cars parking there is it's unexpected for additional crosswalk. So drivers don't expect to see someone darting from a car. You can envision that part of Pleasant Street, that's kind of odd and it's dark early now and they're open until ten. So transitioning over to pedestrian parking, pedestrian issues in that area, that's another major issue. So parking and then pedestrians are unexpected. On Con Street, there's a crosswalk that goes from like the bowling alley side over to Pleasant Street Avenue, there's a crosswalk there. It's dark and people don't expect to see people crossing there because there's not usually, there hasn't historically been a lot of pedestrians.
And there's a lot of parking over on the Gazette, for example, right?
Yes.
Are there other places besides that? I noticed, I just saw a whole strip of the Gazette when I was over there.
The Gazette and the Department of Public Health have both, NEDA has worked out spaces with both of those organizations.
Okay.
So they have at a lot of different times of day and days of week, they have a lot of number of spaces that they're paying for, I believe. But of course, people are parking in the bowling alley or the hotel, you know, trying to scuttle across the street there, so. Yeah, but just that, that area is not used to that many pedestrians down there, so.
Right, the pedestrian, there's a lot of walkers.
A lot of walkers, yeah, yeah. And people do not expect walkers there, so.
I do know, Chief, at our Rotary Committee meeting that we had today, the mayor came in to speak, and one of the residents who lives on Wright Street is a member of our Rotary, and she said it was awful. She said that her car has gotten hit, another car on the street has got, has gotten hit. And she said it's terrible there.
That's true. That's what I'm hearing reported as well. And the problem is, there's, there's a lot of driveways there. So there's like five driveways on one side and I believe four on the other. So if you have cars parked on both sides of the street and it's narrower and you're going to back out, you're backing out and then there's cars that, behind you. And cars are pushing the limits with parking too close to the driveway. And I know.
It's not one way either.
No, it's not, no. And Nancy Forstall has been receiving these calls and her park enforcement officers have been in the area and they've been working on, you know, ticketing if they're too close to driveways. You know, it's kind of unique because a lot of these people, they're not from here. So they come here, they get a ticket and they leave, so there's not like the lesson learned effect.
Right.
And I mean, they may come back at some point, but it's just.
Have we got a sense of what percentage of folks are from out of the area? I would assume it's like a vast majority.
I think so, but I can't give you a number. I've walked down there, I'm sure you all have, right, at different times you get driven by, it's like a lot out of state plates.
It's huge.
I would love to have that number. I'd be tempted to go stand in line and just be like, where are you from?
They certainly have that data, I don't know if they.
Do they collect?
They might have that. They collect everybody's license plate or a driver's license.
There you go.
So they would have the data.
I'd be fascinated. I would guess it would be the majority. I would guess somewhere around sixty or seventy percent, just based on the license plates that I see in the areas.
Right.
It's a lot of New Jersey, New York, yeah.
Right, because really in terms of the East Coast and Massachusetts, I don't know if, there's nothing else.
Right.
There is, there's nothing down to New York and so, you know, I mean, if you go from New York, you get.
Right, I think what Councilwoman Boll is saying makes sense. I think you would be able to get that survey of how many a day and where they're from.
Yeah.
I don't know if they'd be willing to share it, they may, they might maybe kind of like.
Yeah, but the issue is when it comes to parking tickets, I mean, the way parking tickets work is you get one and then when you go back the next day, you don't do the same thing. But in this case, you know, people don't come as frequently, so.
Every day is the same thing.
Yeah, 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 it's a little more challenging, it's a.
I wonder if it's up to the business, like at the local, what's the Fairfield Inn? Is Fairfield one next to, I would just wonder how many people are making a trip to come and stay and.
I have heard anecdotally that they've seen a big increase and definitely at the beginning of, like, November twentieth or whenever it was, they had experience.
Three years, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought for sure we'd stay up to opening up.
It's slowing down over here, but it's.
I know, they got the market, they got a marketing kind of.
So over, over time, you know, we expect it'll dissipate as, as other, other places open, both in North Hampton and elsewhere. But what I'm curious about is we could have as many as another three or four or five opening in North Hampton on, on Main Street, on Pleasant Street, on Pearl Street, up in the Talbets.
Yep.
And given what we've seen here, you know, sort of looking forward, what's the planning for parking issues as others will inevitably open up?
Well, I, I think that as more open dissipation, that's what we're hoping for. There's no plan, I mean, those other places that you, Talbets, they have a good parking lot, that parking area.
The garage is always a response.
Yeah, that's, good luck.
Yeah.
I forget if people were parking there around, but.
I can see his concerns because I'm here myself from an owner right now, rental, with her business, and talking with individuals from Washington who apparently are looking at opening on Main Street.
Yeah, I think those are gonna, there's one on Pleasant Street that they're looking there as well, and I think those are really going to be foot traffic oriented places.
Yeah, but it could be.
We'll have to see how it washes out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, they're more integrated into the North Hampton experience, probably.
Right, and then who knows.
Coming and parking and having dinner and doing your shopping and.
Yeah, and then maybe some of the people downtown who are currently walking or driving down to NEDA, I mean, you know, then they'll use one of those certain.
Right.
We'll have to kind of wait and see.
You're gonna need police force.
So, but.
But it's been relatively peaceful otherwise.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've had, we've had zero, you know, significant incidents down there. There's been some car accidents around the area, minor, but people making poor choices, snaking around to get, you know, random U-turns, unexpected U-turns, sitting cars and whatever else, driving up on a rock yesterday, that happens. But nothing, nothing major, no criminal incidents. We haven't had any OUI drug marijuana arrests, which I know has been a question that people have been curious about. We do expect to see that tick up over time, but we'll see. That's what other states experienced, was it wasn't like the day they opened, then all of a sudden we've started arresting people. It's the gradual change in culture and how people think about marijuana and then, you know, we see that impacting our impaired operators. So we'll have to wait. We, we have a lot of impaired operators in our community, I think. We just wrapped up twenty eighteen, I think we're around roughly eighty-five, so that's a lot.
It is.
Yeah, it's a lot, so. But our midnight shift is good, they're on top of it, they're very busy, you know, tracking people down and preventing accidents, so that's good.
So you're saying eighty-five OUIs, all of an alcohol?
No, a few, fewer drugs, but none, none were marijuana after NEDA opened, so.
I see, I see.
But we've had, it's just been heroin and, you know, some other miscellaneous things. We do track that, we've actually been tracking OUI drugs and what drug they were on since medical marijuana came, because we were, we wanted to establish a baseline and we were curious what will happen, you know, what will happen when we get medical marijuana and then what will happen when we get adult use. So we do have that baseline data. The thing that we just started tracking, which I think is also interesting, is even if it's an OUI alcohol arrest, was there marijuana involvement? So I imagine you all understand that it's very hard to make an OUI marijuana arrest because there's not implied consent laws, there's not a minimum standard of how much and it's different. So if someone is impaired and they have an odor of alcohol and they're, it's, and they're overly, the alcohol, we're always going to charge the alcohol because it's really hard to prove the OUI drug charge. So we're now keeping track of how many OUI alcohol cases we have where, you know, marijuana was in the car or there was admitted use of it or whatever it may be, and just so we kind of see if we see an uptick in the, you know, combination used substances for more driving.
Would you say, Chief, that alcohol still is like number one as far as arrests?
For, out of OUIs? Oh, oh, yeah, it's like eighty to maybe five, roughly.
Yeah, because there's a lot of challenges.
Right, I did a paper at Holyoke Community College on alcoholism for today and it's amazing that it is such a bad disease and.
Indeed, yep. And we see a lot of multiple offenders, so OUI, second offense, third offense, fourth offense, yeah. You see those.
And do they get their license back or what?
You know, it's funny, people say like, I don't understand why he had a license if he was OUI fourth. Just because it was OUI fourth doesn't mean he had a license, like, you know, he could have been driving on license and then still had an OUI fourth charge, so. But people often make that connection of, why did he have a license? He didn't, but he was still driving, so. You know, for, it's incremental, you lose your license for incremental periods of time based on which.
It's not that easy to get back either.
Yeah, it depends on, yeah, you have to do a number of things to get it back. It's very expensive. Yeah, yeah, so.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, so I just want to thank you, Chief, and the NPD for all of the terrific work that you have all done around the NEDA opening and helping control traffic around there, helping point parking in the right direction. And, you know, as the Ward Three counselor, because the complaints are, they're going to you guys, it's to Nancy, but they're also coming to me as well. And I want to thank you for being so responsive.
Sure.
You know, if Nancy were here, I'd thank her as well, so.
It's no problem. Thank you, I'll pass that on. We have three traffic officers assigned down there every day and then we have a security on the overnight, so that's how NEDA is operating best.
So a few things I wanted to add. So I did a little survey on Wright Avenue and this is before New Year's. There were nineteen cars parked on the street, fifteen had out of state plates. So that comes out to around eighty percent, I think it's seventy-nine point something. But yeah, I, I think that's what we would find and I bet the, if we get the information from NEDA, that's, that's roughly going to be the, the number. And so that explains the enforcement problem, because these aren't people who are used to parking anywhere. You know, if you're coming from Pennsylvania or New York, you may have been in North Hampton before, but nobody's been parking in that area ever. So, yeah, so it's no wonder that people are kind of parking all over the place. And, and I appreciate the, the fact that we're, we're allowing parking on Pleasant Street. I've, I've had complaints about that from people saying, you know, it's creating traffic and I'm like, yeah, it's also slowing down traffic. This is, this is what traffic coming on Pleasant is going to look like if we allow on-street parking, so. I appreciate that emergence, emergency decision. And then, let's see, that bus stop?
Yes.
It's not an official bus stop.
Ah.
So it's fine to let people use it for now. I would love to see the PVTA actually include that as part of the Holyoke bus as people go into town, so. And, and the rest will say for the T can say.
Sorry, I just realized, I forgot to put my plaque without, carry on, I'll be right back.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add to NEDA is just that we have heard anecdotal reports of people who are purchasing and then using their vehicles. Our officers haven't witnessed that and we haven't gotten any direct reports of it, but we do hear that just sharing.
Well, I've heard that from some neighbors on Wright Avenue and I think they're hoping that'll encourage more. Oh, one more thing I will say is this week, the lines are way down. And that, I mean, I drove by this morning, I don't know, nine-thirty or so and the line was four people. And I'm used to seeing, you know.
I know.
You know, that the officers can identify by, whoa, up to the corner, that's a two-hour wait. Wait, if it goes over to the curb, that's four hours. So, yeah, so it's probably a fifteen-minute wait for people right now. I think that, you know, the holidays are over, New Year's is over, I, I think we're expecting to see a change and, so this is a good thing. It also means if there's a little line, that means NEDA is still making money, there's still, everybody, all those, all those customer service people are still, but we just don't have that enormous line anymore, so.
What do I think hours?
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten?
Including Sundays.
Every day, but I think Christmas and Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, they were open on New Year's Day.
Yeah.
They were?
I went over there, I want to see, I want to see what it looks like on a night where it's not open and I'm like, what the heck?
Seven days a week?
Yeah.
I have a quick story about the lines. We had out of, out of town visitors several days before Christmas. They're coming into town, they have no idea what was going on here, and they see these massive line. And they'd been listening to the marketing, down a thousand points that day. And it's right next to a Florence bank. They were convinced, they're convinced it was a bank one. They couldn't come up with no other possible explanation for why it would be so. So they found out there was another one.
I know a few first-night revelers accidentally got in that line too, thinking it was for first-night tickets and, yeah.
And a ticket of a sovereign sort.
Yeah, but mostly it seems inconspicuous to me, I mean, I don't really, in terms of, you know, unless I'm really looking for it, I don't really notice that there's a huge amount of people, you know, on both sides. They seem to manage it well enough.
They do a good job.
Well, it's a perfect location for them.
Right, it's right off the highway.
Right off, it's, they knew what they were doing when they located there.
And they paid for, the mayor had said today at the Rotary that they paid for all the signs and everything on the streets.
Yep, yeah, they don't, they want to be good neighbors. They don't want to have people parking and, you know, with other people.
Yeah, they put the signs up where they put a please don't park here residents, you know, on Wright Avenue, so they've been providing signage and stuff.
But in terms of this initial period, the revenue must be enormous. I mean, it's, you know, they must be raking it in right now just from that, yeah. Because the overhead is pretty, I mean, you know, seems like a pretty profitable company.
I think curious to see, yes, yeah, I think they're doing okay. Your last questions were on just our seasonal activities. So the only thing that I think is notable, we, we had the Hot Chocolate Run, the Holiday Stroll, first night, those were specifically things that you had asked about. We are making a recommendation for next year to not have the Hot Chocolate Run and the Holiday Stroll on the same weekend. We, our staff can't handle it.
It's too much.
Yeah, we end up having to, because an event like the Hot Chocolate Run, that takes like twenty officers, so, and the, the Holiday Stroll takes a bunch too, so we only have so many and they just, they have to work, they're regular shifts too, and it's, it's too much for the city, for our department to handle. So I made that request to Amy Kaling and, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it further in future meetings, but that was my recommendation after that weekend. You know, other than that, they went very well. The Holiday Stroll, I think we had down much better after not closing off the main intersection like we did the first time, that was really challenging. So it seems, it's a great event, I, I enjoy going to it myself and it's well-run, well-organized. Joe Barsh is our, he's a sergeant with our department and he does all the events planning, he does a phenomenal job. So he's got it down pat, anything you want to run in this community, Joe Barsh is all over it. So he organized the Hot Chocolate Run as well. And that went well, you know, rained and it was cold. So they didn't have as big of a turnout, but still a massive turnout considering the weather, there were still a lot of people out there. So, you know, they have their, their regular impacts with some traffic changes and traffic backup and that sort of thing, but overall, very well-run, no major impacts in the city and as far as, you know, complaints being what you would expect from people not wanting to, you know, take a detour or something, but. First night went well, again, that was horrible weather, it was rainy. Sergeant Barsh estimated there were about two thousand people at it. Normally, we've had as many as estimated at eight to ten, so there was really no crowd due to that weather. so there was really no crowd due to that weather. But it went fine. Again, that one is pretty much down, down pat as far as how we run it. So it's, uh, went well, so. Those are all the major events that I, I listed you would ask about.
If, if I could circle back, what, what, the staffing issue. The, the mayor told us at a council meeting that based on exit interviews, in addition to pay issues, morale was, was, was cited as a, as an issue when folks leave. Can you say a little, little more about that?
Yeah, I, I just met with the union leadership from the Patrol Officers Union, so representing about fifty of them, not the Supervisors. And I asked him that question because I knew I was coming here, and you thought you may ask me about it. I said, "Tell me, you know, let's talk more about this, although I feel like I have a sense of it since I've worked there for so many years, but still." So, yeah, pay, pay is definitely a factor contributing to people leaving. And workload is definitely a factor. I know that we lost an employee due to his workload was too much. And quite frankly, he went somewhere where he could make more money and do a lot less work, so that is real. Last year, we went through a rocky time at, at NPD for a variety of reasons, things in the city that you all are aware of, but also we had a very publicly visible internal affairs matter, personnel matter. And, you know, that's really hard to work in a place where when you make a mistake, it's all over everywhere, and everyone's saying things about it. And it's hard internally to have, you know, people, you know, it divides people, their thoughts about it, everyone has different perspectives. So that, that was pretty tough for our department as well, and I, we're not recovered from that yet. You know, we, we probably saw in the news that there was an arbitration award in that. And, you know, every time those things come out, it kind of, everything bubbles up around that again. So internal matters are, are really hard because of their public nature. You know, we all make mistakes, and it'd be nice if we could make those mistakes and not have them, you know, everyone talking about them and making headlines. It's, um, it's hard to have that kind of job. So that has an impact. And definitely, you know, the, the, as I mentioned in, in the emails to the mayor, just the, you know, anti-police feeling nationally and locally as well. You know, people wanna work in a place where they feel like they're wanted, you know?
That's big.
So, it's big. And there's, as I said in the memo as well, you know, I believe it's a really small section of community members who, who kind of drive that narrative in our community, but it has an impact, you know. Our officers, in the summertime, when they walk down the street, they get harassed and sworn at. You know, actually, on my way over here, someone told me to F off, so, um, yeah, just that language. I don't know what you put in there for that, but, um, so that, I mean, I'm just being honest with you because this is, this, this is our community right now.
Just walking down and just came out and saw that?
Yes, but it's a person who, who, you know, who this community knows, and they don't like us, so, but it's fine.
Is somebody you know?
Yes, oh, I know, I know many of the people in, you know, in our community who are, you know, that's what my job is.
Right, but somebody you know personally who said expletive to you as you were walking over here, yeah.
Well, I only know the person through their involvement with the police department. I, I never even had an encounter with the person, but just I, I know that the person.
Yeah, you know who they are.
I know who they are, that's, I don't know. But, um, this is the, the nature of our jobs right now, so I don't wanna paint it in any other way. An officer was parked yesterday, um, running radar, and two people approached him and just started yelling at him and calling him names and everything else, so, um, well, there's a lot of support from our broad community, and, and I truly do believe that, but there's a, a higher level of aggressive anti-police activity going on too. And again, nationally, I, I, this is a problem nationally. I was just reading an article in the Washington Post, actually, a similar situation going on down there. And it, this is something going on. So it's new for us to try to figure out how to best manage. You know, me as a leader of the department, how do I keep officers feeling good about their jobs, feeling, you know, respected, and, and respect seems to have been lost, and that is a word that I think is unfortunately becoming kind of outdated for a wide variety of reasons that we can all envision, but, um, yeah, it's tough.
And it shouldn't be happening.
It shouldn't be, and, and it is, and so, and we all experience it. We're all public figures here, so we all see it from different, you know, we, we know what that is. We see it, but it's, the, the way we all communicate with each other has changed.
But what would be the answer? I mean, what can we do as counselors?
Right, yeah.
To help the community and the police department?
Right.
Of having trust?
Yeah.
Because it's a problem.
It is a problem. It, it's a struggle we, we all have. I mean, you have your roles, I have my role. We're all trying to figure it out, like, how can we best deal with this? We feel like we're a, and, and I believe that you all believe this, that we're a responsive department, we're a department that listens, and when we make changes, when we need to make changes, we're pretty open-minded. And, and recognize faults that we have, you know, certainly, but we, we still get a lot of that kind of aggressive, disrespectful, you know, language and things, so, which, that's people's First Amendment rights, and we're respectful of that, but it does make it, you know, more challenging to, I mean, you wanna love to come into work. It's hard enough to love to come into work when you do this job. You, you've seen what's gone on in the last week here with some of the things, and your, your municipal employees have gone to deal with that, you know, dealt with the family members, the children, the, the scene, right? So they're already dealing with that. Having this additional, you know...
That's hard on families.
Yeah, it is, so, so, again, we're all in the same, I, you all get it, I'm just, this is the reality of where we are with morale. It, it's very difficult. I mean, I told you, we're, we held people for eight hundred hours this year. Of course, that's time they had time with their families they were supposed to have, they didn't get to have it. We disrupt vacations, we order people in for seasonal events, you know, we have them go on these difficult calls. You know, they get yelled at on the streets by, by a few people, but still, you know, if you're walking down the street and say hi and have a nice conversation with ten people, and then one person says something horrible to you, when you go home, that's probably the thing you're gonna be thinking about. You're like, "That was awful," you know? And that's the problem, is it's, is even though there's a lot of, you know, people who take the time to say really nice things and lend their support and, and write an email or stuff and say something, we tend to focus on that other stuff.
It is kind of a cultural thing, though, that police officers have had to deal with probably more so in the last, I mean, it used to be that it was understood as a, you know, and, and still is, I think, for the most part, by most people, to be a highly respected profession, you know, law enforcement and, you know, public service, you know, to really be, it had to be a calling, kind of, you know, because it's not like the pay's that great, and it's not like, you know? So, but, yeah, it's a challenge when you have that kind of, because those are, those are real challenges for police officers. It's not, yeah, yeah, there's a pension at the end, and there's, you know, additional, but it's, it's a tough duty to do a career in law enforcement like that, so, to not also have the kind of public support that has always kind of assumed to be there, just, you know, I mean, the respected, um, the respect in the position itself in, in terms of choosing and, you know, and...
I will say, the more that I talk to teachers or other people in public service, they're experiencing some issues with people who are lacking showing respect, you know? You know, my partner works in a school, and some of, some of the things that she shares about, you know, the way people talk to kids, talk to adults, is very different too. So I'm, I'm worried about that, that even who's coming up and not having, you know, that kind of natural respect that we probably all had for adults and people in fields, police officers, teachers, you know, whatever it may have been. So, yeah, it's a challenge in our, our generation.
It is, future.
Yeah, it is.
Do you think the, the actions taken by City Council itself filter, filter through and have any, have any impact on this, on this morale issue? I, you know, that sounds, that's something I worry about.
Right, so the, yeah, yes, I've talked, I've talked to the union about it and asked them, I, you know, "How do you feel?" And, um, you know, this is a difficult issue for all of us, and, and you're all council members, and you've all voted in favor of, of budgets and tactical things and many things like that. There's been a few issues that have come up that, um, you know, I spoke with your council leadership about, and, and in a private setting in a meeting that we had that you all know about, and I, probably it's best if we just, I don't wanna make more of a public matter of this than anywhere else, have to, you know, talk with you privately if you wanna talk about that more. It, it has an impact overall, and I do recognize your support in many areas. But just in some way, it's been more difficult for our staff to kind of understand, and for me to understand as well, some of the, some of the processes.
Yes. Well, partly, frankly, fully accounted for.
No, no, I, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't get much more.
I think it needs to be talked about.
Yeah, it, it does. I just also think some things are, one of the things that came up in the discussion is really just improving communication, and maybe sometimes, um, direct communication between people instead of doing it in public forums is helpful, so, yeah.
I, I couldn't agree more. I, I think that we, as a city and as leaders, need to figure out a way to have this conversation so we're not talking about bullets, Walmart, and, you know, policing all in the same subject, you know, that, that we're, we're having a broader conversation about the, the good work that the NPD does and the work that we want done in our community. And, um, and that I, I don't think that you or the NPD would shy away from having those more difficult discussions. But to have it around these specific, you know, items, you know, whether it's gonna be shields or bullets or cameras, it invites a, it, it, we go off on tangents and, and we're not able to have a really productive discussion. At City Council, last we met, Lori Loizel read a list of, of trainings and accreditations that the NPD has. Is, are those on the website somewhere, or? I, I think that's the kind of things that we wanna start talking about, how, you know, what our police force is doing to be cutting-edge, to be, um, to be, to match the values that, you know, that our community wants to see, and that, um, so anyway, I'd like to figure out ways we can, having something on the, the website to point people, say, "Here's what our officers are doing. Here's, here's the trainings that we've done." I think that would be helpful, but...
So our, our Open Data Portal actually includes a list of different types of trainings and how many hours we've invested in that type of training. So for instance, the category of like Bi-Space Policing, which is something that our community cares quite a bit about, you could look on there and see how many hours we spent, you know, in 2017 studying that. So it is on our site.
Okay.
We update that every January, February, March. And once a calendar year is ended, then we have to work on putting those, that, that data together. And when we release it, I often include a, a post on our social media saying, "Hey, we just released this, um, training." You know, our top training categories were, whatever they were. I know last year was like mental health stuff, Bi-Space Policing stuff, it's mixed. So we, we do put that out there, and we try to highlight the good work that they're doing. But, uh, I don't know, maybe we could be, be better at it, but, uh, we're doing a lot of good work.
Well, I think, maybe us being, you know, that, I don't think I've gotten that message, or I'm under a newsletter.
Well, last time we did it would have been January, February, twenty seventeen.
So I look forward to that.
You should be seeing it soon.
Okay, right, I look forward to seeing it. And, um, and is there gonna be a Citizens Police Academy this year?
Yes, yep.
I encourage anybody who hasn't gone to check it out.
And if you can't do that, because if it winds up being scheduled on Thursdays against these councils? But a, a close second is a valuable experience, is, is doing a ride-along, which is tremendously helpful and just understanding in a, in a way you can never otherwise grasp, is just what a, what a night on the shift is, is all about.
It was amazing when I took it with Marley Blair. She took me all around, and it was very interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I think one of the best things we can all do is spend a little time in each other's shoes, you know? Regardless of whatever roles we all play, it's probably one of the things we're missing, is some of that shared perspective, so.
There you go.
Any other questions?
I'll just say that the, the Open Data Portal, Open Portal is, it really is tremendous valuable information, and it's, it's there for everybody to see, and it directly contradicts a lot of what some folks would like to have us believe about police, the frequency of various types of police incidents. You look at the data, it's not there. As, as you were describing, the last discharge of a weapon by an officer, other than for euthanizing an animal or in the firing range, you believe was something like nineteen eighty-five.
Yes.
And, and, uh, that's, you know, that's, that's an important data point that I doubt most folks realize.
King Street in front of Donut Donuts, there was some sort of drama out there. I wasn't on that, but I heard the stories.
The last, the last charge was Donut Donuts.
Yeah, something happened, some sort of shit out there, so.
You mean of a police discharge?
Yeah, police, yeah, there was fire exchange between an officer and a, a subject. I don't know anything about that, other than that's the location of it, so, yeah, it'd be fine, it's been a while. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, they're, they do a great job, and then there's a lot of split-second decisions that they have to make.
Anybody else have any comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me, Bert.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it very, very much. Okay, well, um, the only other appointments we have now are those, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, yes. We have six appointments. All of these are for the Charter Review Committee. And we have two that aren't on the agenda, but we know that will refer to us on Thursday. So what I was suggesting...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
It's my thought that because the legislation already dictates how this committee will be established, which is appointment by the mayor in consultation with each of the respective wards, that that consultation has happened, and these names come to us as having been vetted and recommended by the respective ward counselors. So I would entertain a motion to take them as a group, um...
I would be delighted to make a motion.
For positive recommendations.
I'll second that we, that we pass on positive recommendations for all as a group.
Thank you. So that was moved and seconded to send the names of Robert Murici, Sam Harper, Stan, Stan Remolton, Roberta Sullivan, Patricia Healy, and Molly Fox. And, oh, I should have said which wards they were, but those will be clearly evident. But for those particular six appointments, would be, would go with a positive recommendation to the Falsity Council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no abstentions, objections, okay. And I would assume that, so what we have is a follow-up. Well, for the two remaining, it's two, right?
Yes.
Two remaining, um, on, uh, January seventeenth, is that the next day?
Yep.
We'll take a recess from the regular council meeting and hopefully take up a similar motion for those remaining, and that way they can have, we can have the whole thing taken up under the consent agenda.
Sounds like a good one.
Yes, it does. All right, so that's all we have on our agenda for tonight. We don't actually have a specific, um, plan for the February meeting. And I'm wondering if you folks have any thoughts, or, um, if we know we'll likely have appointments because they come in drips and drabs in the next few council meetings. So, um, anything that folks had on their radar for, could reach out to for February? Ones we haven't seen in a while are probably, um, Building Commissioner. I'm not sure when we saw Fire last, but it seems like it wasn't that long ago. Fire EMS.
I think you've seen Fire since last week here, because...
Oh, okay, if that's the case.
You had, what, the Fire Department?
Yeah, because, yeah. Yeah, with Dwayne or, um, you know, with EMS. We could ask Fire EMS for, if it's not too soon to try to do a regular update since it's been a while.
Can we make that request?
Yeah, that's a good one.
And then you're, you're mentioning Building Commissioner. As discussions proceed about Building Commissioner, regulation of Airbnbs, I don't know if you noticed, that, that's now, that's now the law. That's, the, the state law allows municipalities to, to regulate Airbnbs within the confines of the state legislation the governor signed at this time. So it'd be interesting to see what, what the approach is here, and whether bed and breakfasts and Airbnbs are treated and cared, which they should be.
That was brought up today.
Somewhere down the road, that conversation with Building Commissioner, I think, quite interesting.
Okay, so let's think about that for maybe a follow-up, um, meeting in March or something. All right, so with those stops, I'll ask if there's a, those, no trigger.
Second.
Eight, nine, beta. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.